Okay. I'd like to call to order the Lake Elmo City Council meeting on January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. It is seven oh one. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I think at this point we can move number nine, the plans and specs for Village Parkway Railroad Crossing. Move that to essentially number twelve at this point. I'll make that change. Does anyone else want to make any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I will hear any motions.
Motion, second.
Motion to what?
Approve the agenda.
And we have a, we have a motion from Councilmember Dragic and a second from Councilmember Hearn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes. Next item is the approval of minutes from January seventh, the special and regular meeting. Does anyone have any changes they would like to see? Otherwise, I will hear a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from January seventh, special and regular meetings?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from January seven for both the special and regular meetings, please say aye.
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 None opposed, the motion passes. Do we have any public comments or inquiries tonight? We do not. No presentations?
Other than we're all here and present.
We are very present, even though we are cold and, cold coming in. Now we are warm. For item F, for the consent agenda, it is pretty quick. I can run through it. Two, approve payments and disbursements. Three, approve massage therapy licenses. Four, approve pay requests. Three, the final for Thirty Fifth Street North Gap segment improvements. Five, approve the release of warranty security for Wildflower Fourth Edition. Six, approve security reduction for Eastern Village Seventh Edition. Seven, approve MPCA grant agreement amendment for Well Two Water Treatment Plant. Eight, approve Crossroads East Fifth Amendment to the Development Agreement Resolution two thousand and twenty five dash zero zero nine. Ten, approve lease extension at thirty three oh three Langley Court North with T-Mobile Central LLC. Would anyone like to move to approve the consent agenda?
So moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended?
Aye.
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 None opposed, motion passes. First up on the regular agenda, Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission appointment. So Administrator Miller, I don't know if you want to go through that or if I should just make a quick motion since this was tabled from, from last week?
Can go ahead. I don't have anything else to add to it.
All right. I would like to make a motion. So we traditionally have had a primary and a secondary. I would like to make a motion to appoint myself as, as primary and appoint our newest member as our secondary backup, however we want to phrase it. I, I know, because we had discussed this previously, you know, there might be possible time commitment issues. But we can move forward from there and maybe change over time, but I think that'll be my motion for now.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed, the motion passes. Moving of consent number nine to the regular agenda. So this was approved the plans and specs for Village Parkway Railroad Crossing. Uh, and I had requested to move this, but I know others had interest as well. I, I can say on my end, my goal was to hear from staff, potentially from Jack, because this is a, a public meeting. And I know this item, especially in the east neck of the woods, is a, a pretty big item. So, you know, it served as a good place to just give an update, long-term goals, possible timeframe. Um, and I, Councilmember Dragic, I believe, had, had questions as well. But if you could just from, I know this is just for the possible, uh, plans and specs to go out for bid. Timeline wise, going off for bid, what does that look like? If we go out for bid, accept it? When would be looking at construction and what does that actually look like for the end goal?
Yeah, thank you, Council. The, so I did, I put it on consent generally because I did a full presentation in November on this when we approved the UP Railroad Grant Agreement. So we, we did a, a presentation, the plans and specs had been completed at that time. We presented the improvements, the costs, the agreement with UP Railroad, the coordination efforts. Um, at this time, we're just asking to go out for bids and then we presented again in March when we bring the award back. So that's on the regular agenda and then we have actual costs. We can provide an updated cost. At this time, we don't have anything more updated than we did, um, from November. Um, but this is a, this is, um, a, a project the city's been working on since before I was the city engineer in two thousand and six. By the time I came on in two thousand and six, this crossing had been identified through old village work plans and things like that. So it's, uh, been something and, and conversations with UP Railroad had even been initiated before I, I came on. So I, it's, it's been a, a long lasting planning effort. Um, we began to go forward with implementation of this several years ago and ran into immediate roadblock with UP Railroad, um, basically denying the, the permit submittal, uh, within fifteen minutes of submitting it and telling us they were no longer interested in allowing it. Um, we actually had to go find a process, a legal proceeding through MINDOT, uh, administrative hearing. We had to, um, basically, um, make an argument and get MINDOT, uh, the Commissioner of MINDOT to rule in our favor and mandate that the crossing can go in, uh, based on our justification for the need. Um, and, and even with that, it's been three years to get it permitted through UP Railroad because they are just that slow and dragging their feet and everything that you have to go through. And our plans were essentially done three years ago. So we, it, it's not been a lot more work on the project. It's been getting through, um, permit processes with UP. Um, so in November, we presented those agreements. We got them approved from the council. We've executed those agreements. We've had several coordination meetings with UP. So this project gets implemented where the city begins to build the roadway on, uh, either side of the railroad tracks. We get our project to a certain level and we have to stop and we have to wait for UP Railroad crews to come in and do surface improvements. And then we come and we pave and match into those improvements. And then they come back and they do signal arm improvements. So this will be a crossing with signal arms. It'll have a trail on one side, a sidewalk on the other side. It's the continuation of the Village Parkway roadway across. Um, one of the justifications that we were able to prevail in the MINDOT proceeding um, was the pedestrian movements into downtown to, to make safe pedestrian improvements. Right now, you're getting cut through traffic in a, in a crossing that's not safe, that doesn't have as good of visibility. One of the things you'll see out there when construction starts is there's a lot of, uh, very, there's trees, but it's a lot of overgrown vegetation going on. So a lot of that's going to have to get cleared and taken down. And that's to provide sightlines because this is a trail and a sidewalk crossing of a railroad where a train can be approaching. So, um, they'll be taking a lot of that vegetation down and making sure, uh, up to meet the standards for sightlines.
Some of that be on city land or in the railroad land?
It's mostly in the right way. Uh, the city land's been pretty much, I think most of it's clear cut on the city side of it, um, as it stands today. So, um, so those, that's the, the scope of the, the, the improvements in the project. It also includes a water main, um, crossing. So we'll be directional drilling a water main underneath the railroad as part of this improvement. So of the total project scope, we've broken it down into, um, a component that's street related and a component that's, um, paid for out of the Water Enterprise Fund to get a trunk water main underneath to, to create a loop.
And there, and sewer will not be going under there?
Sewer's already gone underneath further to the, further to the east. So that was a previous project in, when the developments, when we were extending sewer up to Wildflower and Village Preserve. Um, so the sewer crossing's already been completed.
Have we had any indication from the, as much as it goes on to one property, but the cross, the, it will cross onto a different property owner, has there been any recent discussions as to their plans to then start to move on that and to potentially then need to build all the way out to County fourteen?
I have not been partied any future development applications. I mean, there's, we had a couple of applicants come in north of the railroad tracks and pursue projects and then discontinue pursuing them. That was the one right adjacent to the downtown, for instance. So it's not that it hasn't happened yet, but, um, I'm not aware of anything that's actively going on right now.
Director Stopa, do we know of, of things? Because essentially it, it crosses over two different, potentially three parcels as it's crossing over?
Not currently. The, um, Eastern Village owner is also the owner of the parcel of the north. But I want to say that that area is phased. Not in the current phase. So let me look that up. Section just north is not in the current phase. The section to the, uh, west is in the current phase.
In which the, as it's going diagonally, it's literally like five percent of that parcel for the future phase. Whereas it's hitting the, you know, the forty-two acre and then the, the thirty-one acre, pretty, pretty hard in the, in the middle.
And then the owner of the western parcel, I believe, is At Home Apartments.
I have asked enough of my questions. Um, Councilmember Dragic?
Yeah, this, I don't think it's a bad project. Or see, although I thought we were looking to put into have, because there's future development on the north side of the tracks, that this would serve, but I'm not hearing that unless I misheard. But what concerns me about it is the fiscal impact analysis was not particularly detailed. And so I went back to the capital improvement plan we adopted last month. And this project's in there with a million sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars coming from the inter-infrastr- infrastructure fund, well, four oh nine, and the water portion, three fifty-two, eight hundred, coming from the water fund. But if you look at the financial, uh, situation in the infrastructure fund, at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, it had a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in cash. It had assets of about six hundred thousand, but four hundred and fifty thousand is receivables from other non-major governmental funds which have no cash in them. So basically we have a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in cash in a fund that's supposed to pay for a million one project. Um, now, we may have collected a million dollars in two thousand and twenty-four. I don't know because we don't get, we get detailed information on the major governmental funds as members of the council, but not the minor funds. So I don't know what's in there. Um, but my concern is we're approving a project, go, go out to bid for a project, which we don't know how we're going to pay for it. And, um, the other thing concerns me, of course, is if we, if we adopted a CIP and identified a million dollars in funding that doesn't exist, why would we do that? I mean, I'm not sure. And unfortunately, Clarissa's not here to answer those questions. We may have collected a million. The other thing is we have two development agreements with Eastern Village. Eastern Village two and three, um, indicated that they're going to pay for this crossing. Um, and the money in the amount, total amount in those agreements was five hundred thousand dollars. But there was a clause that said was greater than that, that they, you know, that we would, we probably go ahead and they and/or the city could fund it. Well, given, you know, who's going to benefit from this, I'm not sure. I'd be willing as a city councilor to put five hundred thousand dollars to a crossing where we have no proposed development, don't know what the future holds, um, to benefit whoever buys the property, um, there. And so I just think it'd be prudent to wait until Clarissa gets back and find out how we're going to pay for this. Um, I know we're just going out for bids, but we go out for bids and we ask these engineering firms to spend time and money putting together a bid for a project. We don't know how we're going to fund yet. To me, there's no harm in waiting two weeks and finding out how we're going to pay for this first and then going out for bids.
Is that a introduction to a motion or a question?
Well, I, it's part of discussion. I don't know how my fellow counselors feel about that because, you know, because of the open meeting law, we can't discuss that before the meeting privately. Um, but I bring that up and, and don't, um, I don't want anyone to misunderstand. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm not, you know, I think the project is probably a good project. We should do it. I just want to make sure that we have funding in place to do it. And if the, in the infrastructure fund doesn't have the cash, maybe we can do some juggling around with other projects and find a way to fund it. But I don't think we should increase our debt by another million dollars in two thousand and twenty-five. Above the, the couple million we already planned for, for the twenty-five street improvement project. So I just want to get my handle around the financial impacts and the funding for this project before we start, you know, retaining, going out for advertisements.
Jack, is there any concern if, if we don't move forward with this, with the engineers that were, um, we're looking for bids and with the process that you've gone through with all the permitting?
We're, we're not looking for bids from engineers. We're looking for bids from contractors.
From contractors, excuse me. Is there any concern with, I mean, like you said, this has been a process for years and if we don't move forward and?
There is because of the history of the project. I, I guess I don't know, um, it's more because of the close coordination with UP Railroad and the fact that they've ordered materials, they've ordered, um, they've scheduled their improvements and they take years to schedule their improvements. We've been waiting for two and a half years for them to get to this point. Um, I don't know if two weeks is the trigger or a month is a trigger. I don't know. You know, I, I don't, you don't deal with UP very often, but UP is very oner- you, you do things on their time, not your time. Um, so I, I'm not, I, you know, two weeks might be a fine delay, a month could be a fine delay. It also could be a problem. I, I, it's hard to predict.
Are you using the word fine as in monetary or acceptable?
It could be okay. I, I don't know. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think in my, in my view, if you were talking a longer delay than two weeks, I would say the costs are only going up in this project. You know, with, part of the thing was to get bids early in the spring. It's pretty good practice to get them earlier than later. Um, again, two weeks is probably not a, a, a trigger. But, um, we want to be careful about delaying this because it's been years, right down to suing UP Railroad to get to this point. And to, to, you know, unless the councils literally think, if you're thinking about not doing the project ever, um, then I would, then sure, you should pause and take, take a step back and look at whether you're going to do this project or not. But the way it's teed up right now, you're not doing it cheaper than what it is right now and you can actually get it done this year. Any, a delay could be out of your control as to what that delay looks like. There were discussions about waiting till developers on the north side, but because, because again, you operate on UP's schedule and not your schedule. If you wait for developers to go there, you might wait three years for them to get in line with you and you have no crossing for all that time.
I apologize, Jack. I thought we're going for bid for contractors, not for engineers. I miss, I misspoke.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, I guess the question would be if we, if we go out for bids and we don't have the money, we just, I guess we just don't award the bid. But, or we find, we find a way to fund it by reducing other potential capital projects in two thousand and twenty-five. I don't know. I mean, I'm not opposed if the council, either council members want to go out for bid. I just, I just.
Well, maybe a question for Sarah. If we go out for bid and we also in the same motion ask to clarify in two weeks the financials on this, is the bid being proposed in a way where we are saying no matter what, we will accept someone? Or do we have the ability to say, turns out the bids are great, however, the finances, we need more time to figure out?
Mr. Acting Mayor, members of the council, um, I think you could go out for bids. And I mean, you can always reject the bids basically for any reason. So if you decide you don't want to do the project because you can't finance it, whatnot, I think that's fine. Um, what was your other question?
That.
That, okay. Yeah, I mean, at this point, you could go out for bids. I mean, I don't know if there's a timing issue with.
It's a, you could hold the bids for sixty days.
Yeah.
Um, that would have the same, you know, any, that delay would have the same delay as depending on UP's schedule as well. But, um, you would get the bids in at least in an earlier date and you can hold them up to sixty days if you don't want to award it right away. Um, but the bid, your, your standard contract documents always allow you to reject any and all bids. Um, so you have that right? You don't, you want to take that seriously too? You don't want to just throw out bids and go right out for bids again because then contractors lose interest. And I've, when I've seen that happen in the past in my history, generally they all come in higher, not lower.
The other thing I would ask if we, if we decide to go out for bids, that we ask our staff and, and Sarah to look at those development agreements and see if that money should come from the developer in Eastern Village two and three under our development agreements.
Would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
Well, there's no motion here, is there?
True. Would you like to make a, well, first of all, would anyone like to make a motion? Because it sounds like we might have a possible way forward. I don't have the item in front of me, which is lovely. I was looking for it.
Well, yeah, so I'll move to approve resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one zero, approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the Village Parkway UPRR crossing improvements.
And I will second that, but I will make a possible friendly amendment to that to, uh, ask that staff clarify for our next meeting the specific finances of this and specifically how it is in relationship to the previous development agreements that have been signed with Eastern Village. Uh, because I, I, I do recall that aspect, but I, yes, that language needs to be looked into. What's?
Do we, I guess just like, do we need that for, do we need to make an amendment? Can we just ask for that information to be brought?
Either or.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think staff.
Does it change it?
Is aware that we would like to know the finances by next, by the next meeting.
Yes.
And then no, it, it's been, it's been discussed and informed.
The other thing I would point out to the members of the city council is that when I first saw this one about the funding, I had, I had sent Jack an email and he got back to me and mentioned that was some talk about wrecks. It was in the back of his mind years ago and that little bit of information he remembered prompted me to go back and look for those agreements, which I found. But had you not said that, I don't think anyone would have known that there's something in Eastern two and Eastern three that provided some form of payment for this. So I really appreciate you remembering that, Jack.
Yeah, the, the railroad crossing fees are mentioned in the financing portion here too. I, I only reported, I don't know what the number is that we've collected, so I was unable to report the number. Um, but it was, it's my recollection that some portion of the project was negotiated with the developers. And I think it's, I think it's all seven phases of Eastern Village and the three phases of Northport. And I think it's supposed to apply. And so this would require someone, it was negotiated by Administrator, uh, Zuliger at the time. Um, and I think it also will apply to the properties north of the railroad too. So I don't know what the exact boundaries were that this was to apply to and how many overall wrecks that is. But, um, I think the intent was to probably calculate some portion of the project, uh, funding.
In two and three, it talks about a contribution like, it was like a hundred and ninety-three thousand cash or a hundred and sixty thousand cash. Then it has a list of parcels, a table with a list of parcels and has that, you know, any, if, that there be these costs of, of five hundred thousand dollars collected from this list of parcels. And it says if the project's more than five hundred, then the developer and the city, they all could pay or the, or the city could pay something along that line. It's kind of ambiguous at that point, but there may be other development agreements that include some costs for this. I don't know. I just, I looked and said, well, Eastern Village two and three seem like they are the logical ones. Um, when I clicked on the county map and saw the plots, so those are the two I chased down and was able to find. It was a long and arduous process because this was done in two thousand and seventeen and the planning is only minutes don't go back that far. Um, the council wants to, but you got to go meeting by meeting, by meeting, by meeting to find them.
And the original, I mean, for first edition and the original preliminary plot would be back in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen? If we're talking Administrator.
Oh, yeah. It, it, it happened well before that, I think.
So I think it's a little bit of, you know, but I would guess that somewhere in our files, we have those development agreements that we would look through and see what's each person's obligation. I, I did send to Nicole the ones from two and three. Um, and so, uh, I just think as we go through, it, and they say, maybe, maybe Clarissa's going to come back and say we collected a million dollars into the infrastructure fund in two thousand and twenty-four and we have enough money to pay for it.
That'd be lovely.
That would be lovely. Yep.
So, um, I'm lost. Where are we adding with the motion?
Motion to approve, the motion right now is just for going out for bid.
So the original one. And then I guess my comment is, you know, I make this motion. I, I would be totally fine too if we did want to wait two weeks. Is, if, as long as that's not a concern, I'm fine with that. At the same time, I also feel comfortable moving forward just with the understanding of like, we're going to get this informa- it's going to be really important to get this information at the next meeting or when the bids return for, if we actually approve it and, and taking those into consideration. So, but if, if someone feels, if you feel like we should wait two weeks, you know, I'm, I'd be happy to go that direction as well.
I think based on what Jack's told us, that, you know, whatever the development, if the development agreements don't provide for coverage, I think then we go through our CIP and say, if we got to spend a million dollars for this, what are we not going to spend a million dollars on in two thousand and twenty-five to get this done, given all the, given all the stress that they've gone through to get us to this point?
Yeah, I, I don't, it's been, uh, pushing a train uphill. I don't, I don't know. If we don't do it this year, I don't know what that means. I just don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know. Do we ever have to take it back to the, is there a time and point we have to take it back to the MINDOT?
Yeah, there's probably some type of deadline under the project.
So it sounds like this is a project we, we need to find funding for. Just a question of, you know, what do we have available? And if we don't have enough, how do we plug the gap?
I'm really glad you brought that up because I mean, I think that is going to be very important. Like you said, if, if, hey, I mean, if this is necessary that we do this because of all the effort that's been put into it, the fact that if we don't do it, you know, we don't know what we're looking at, at the possibility. Uh, maybe we have to reconsider what else we're looking at doing in two thousand and twenty-five.
And I didn't know the background about all the work you went through to get the crossing approved and that changes my perspective. Um, I think we find a way to get this done. It's just, there's something we won't do.
We have to look at the financial.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there was a time when it was not looking good, especially when we had to go to MINDOT and it was not clear if they were going to listen to the state, uh, state agency on a regulatory framework when railroads have a lot of federal protection. So it was not clear that, that, that route was going to work. So I, number one, I, I appreciate recalling and bringing back some of that. And I also thank you, Councilmember Dragic, for, for bringing this up. I, I fully agree. It, to me, this is a project we do need to get it done. And if in, when we come back in two weeks, my viewpoint would be, hopefully we have some of those answers from the finances. And if we don't yet have the answers, but we're starting to dig, we can reconvene and discuss that there. Councilmember Craigness, any, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be smart to go out for bid and then confirm with Clarissa when she gets back about the financials. But, um, I don't think there's any harm in going out for bid right now.
Sounds good. I would concur and I will, that was a very good discussion on something that, um, again, and we brought this up because I, I think it's worthy for the public to see this as well. Because this is a- Because this is a pretty big, it's a pretty big project.
Pretty big project, yeah.
And it's, it's been in the comp plan, it's been in the works and there's been a lot of, a lot of sweat put into it. But I recall the question, all those in favor of the emotion, the motion as originally written for resolution 2025-010, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? None, motion passes. Council reports, Councilmember Dragasich?
No report.
Thank you. I do not have one. I, I look forward to, I just lied. I do have one. I, I look forward to our, our next airport meeting. Councilmember Kragnis, I'm looking forward to going to those with yourself as well and we can get to see the, the comedian in action. Above and beyond that, I, please stay warm, everyone. The cold is, is getting better, but hopefully everyone was able to do what was necessary for their own safety over the last couple of days. And that is that. Councilmember Hurd?
I just, I'll let everyone know, I finished the, the training for the, the taxation. I'm blanking on the words right now. So at least I, I don't know if anyone else has done that, but I'm planning on being here for that meeting. So I am trained, but I think it'd be good if we get one more, just in case I'm sick or something.
I am trained as well.
I am trained as well.
Very good, all right, we got an outdoor room.
I'm trained as well.
All right, very good.
We'll, we'll have a great time.
This'll be great, excellent.
Councilmember Kragnis?
Uh, no report here. Looking forward to joining the Lake Elmo Airport Commission.
Sounds good. Administrator Miller?
I just wanted to thank everyone for participating in goal setting last week, two evenings. And myself and Phil are working on bringing back a draft strategic plan for the council to review.
When, when can we look forward to that?
Soon.
Right after the railroad crossing done.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Stopa?
No report.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, I just want to let the council know for the 2025 Street Improvement Project, we do have property owner meetings scheduled for the January 28th and 29th. So there's three different neighborhood meetings we'll be having. One at 5 o'clock on the 28th, one at 6 o'clock, and then the third one on the 29th at 5 o'clock. They're all virtual meetings. The residents have been notified and we'll just be introducing them that their streets are being considered for improvement this year. And then there's three areas where we are looking into what the costs of water are and would be soliciting input from those property owners of whether they're interested in water or not. So when we bring the feasibility report forward to the council, we have, we have cost numbers to present and we have feedback from the property owners for your consideration.
Thank you for that. Ms. Insala?
No report.
Sounds good. Staff reports regarding fourth quarter dashboards. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the fourth quarter 2024 dashboards? I mean, I, I can say for one, I appreciate that they are in there. They are good and useful. I don't have any comments per se about any specific item, but thank you for putting those together. I, I know they do take work to get those and to be consistent from quarter to quarter on, on what is in there. Future agenda items?
Financing railroad crossing.
We're just including the future agenda items now in every packet. So if you have any specific questions, we can answer them. Otherwise, it's just kind of a preview and it's our working document, so things do shift around.
I do have a future agenda item I'd like to take a look at in our workshop. And that is a definition of trail and sidewalk. We had a number of emails from residents about plowing of them and cleaning of them. And, and our interpretation now is if it's concrete, it's a sidewalk. If it's bituminous, it's a trail, even if it functions as a sidewalk. And so I think we should define what is a trail and what is a sidewalk so we can look at our ordinance and say, you know, if it's a sidewalk, adjoining property owner has to clear it. And if it's a trail, they don't. I don't have any problem with that. It's just, it's ambiguous right now and it's a little bit arbitrary. For instance, in our neighborhood, you go Palmer Drive from 10th up to wherever it tees in. I forget what the name of that street actually is.
You got it as well.
It's, you know, like...
Palmer Court.
Palmer Court, whatever. Okay, so you walk onto a concrete sidewalk all the way up almost to King's Court. And then there's a bituminous trail coming from 10th Street going back behind some of the homes. And that joins in just to the south of King's Court. And it's bituminous all that way to Lake Elmo Avenue. So no one has to clear that section of that bitumen because it's a trail. But there is no other sidewalk. That is the sidewalk in our neighborhood on that, you know, in that section. And so I think if we carefully define it, we don't impose on people to clear trails behind their house, but we have a system of sidewalks that you can move around the neighborhood that are cleared. Like my house is on a corner, so I have to clear 250 feet of sidewalk when it snows. I don't mind it, you know, it's just I happen to have a corner house. That's the price you pay for being on the corner. But I think it would make more consistency and provide for the pedestrian movement around the neighborhoods in the winter months in some way that's more logical than just it's bituminous, so it's not a sidewalk. It'd be a future workshop item. If nobody objects.
I, I personally don't object. I mean, in looking at the schedule on March 11, we have one item currently, utility financial management plan updates. Is, is this something that they would give enough time between now and, and March from the planning department, from Commissioner Miller, either or? Because it, it sounds like, I mean, you're, you're thinking it's, it's code definitions. It's also likely code enforcement aspect as well.
We already have a code provision, so you have to clear the sidewalk. We just never define what a sidewalk is anywhere in our code or what a trail is. And I, I shared my email with, with our attorney and she suggested that we adopt a definition. I'm sure she has one right in the back of her mind. If Nick says it's a sidewalk, it's a sidewalk.
Would this also be the time to have that discussion about the city, the other requests that do come in about the role of the city? Or should we keep that as a separate item because that's a financial one and that is a much larger topic?
I think we should put it all on the same agenda. I mean, how do you decide what you're gonna call what, absent the discussion? How, you know, if we, if we call it a sidewalk, then who's going to clean it is part of the discussion. What if it's, you know, what if it's in a certain location? I don't know. I'd, I'd like to clarify, I'm not suggesting that we would, as a city, take over cleaning sidewalks. There may be areas where we would decide to do it. Because we spend a lot of time talking about a city with, you know, pedestrian movement and accessibility. And then we say, well, four months of the year, we're not gonna worry about it.
Thoughts?
Did we have a workshop on this, I believe, last year?
We, we did on...
Where we were looking at with the, from the perspective of cleaning, removal, disney removal.
And at, at that time, it was concrete sidewalks.
Yep.
But Councilmember Dragasich, and I, I guess I didn't realize this. There are spots where bituminous is functionally acting like someone's front sidewalk and there is not a sidewalk on the street. And I guess I, I did not realize that. That is a curiosity, actually, on my part.
When I look in our neighborhood, the trail, the fact that they have the trail, it makes some sense because it connects Lake Elmo Avenue all the way to 10th Street. And so, and where, where's the side of the street the sidewalk's on, the trail has to be on, only logically belongs on that side. So it's not that there was poor planning or illogic. It's just our definition of sidewalk, since it's nowhere in the code, we've just made an arbitrary decision. Rather than what is its function, it's what's it constructed of.
Is this something that between now and then, if staff had questions from Councilmember Drag- for Councilmember Dragasich about kind of the ideas for this, that they can reach out to him and get feedback? I, I will say, and, and for Councilmember Kragnis as well, something that I do and I try to make sure is I speak with staff weekly. To some of these conversations, some of it's, you know, things are coming up, questions have arisen, but just gonna get a, a feel for things, both feedback from staff, but to provide my feedback as well. And those are very good opportunities so that everyone's on the same page.
Okay.
I would, I would highly recommend that. And if you could, if you are able to, I would highly recommend reaching out with Administrator Miller. See if there's a five hour time slot a week. So we, like, we have a chat a half hour a week. I know the mayor does as well. I don't know if, if you two do or, I mean, you're retired. I assume you just email it.
I, I send emails to the administrator and, and if it's, I think it's a legal part to it. I'll copy Sarah or I'll copy Jack or, or Jason, you know. I try to, I try to keep it to the minimum number, assuming that if I send, everything Nicole has copied on. So if I only sent it to Jason and she thought, well, it should have gone to Clarissa or whatever, you know, I know she forwards it on and coordinates that. But I try to minimize the number of staff. I'm, I'm pinging to those I think that are, you know, obviously, would obviously need to be involved and trust their judgment and sharing with the other staff.
So it sounds like we have a possible addition for the March 11th workshop. Above and beyond that, I didn't hear any other comments for upcoming?
Nope.
With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:38. Thank you all for coming.